From our recess. We're starting with, oops, a strategic, starting with our strategic plan. Awesome. Are we out here?
I know. It's a big table. I thought it was gonna be a huge party.
I think all you guys, the poor people are here.
Yeah, okay. Okay. We're all here. Very good. So.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, way back in June, middle of June, actually two months ago, just about. Today. We brought what we've got here in front of us to the board. Valerie and I came in representing the communication team. And with a framework that the communication team had worked on. And asked for you all to, you know, say, do we move forward with this? At that time, you all, because I think it was, Bobby, I think it was your first time there. So I think appropriately, you said, let's put that on hold. Let's give Commissioner a chance to get up to speed. And so we went away and two months very quickly passed. Some sort of time warp happened. So what I'm gonna do today is really just review for everybody the process we've already been through. Then we'll walk through the plan itself. We should wait to pass these things out, because everybody will be reading them. And then talk about our next planned steps. And would really, you know, welcome any discussion that you want to have around any of those topics right now. But we'll just walk through, that'll be sort of it. What we've done, what we got, where we're going, okay? Sort of past, present, future. So this process started early in the year when AMC facilitator came up and met with you all for one day. And you guys drafted a first version of a mission, vision, and values. Not long after that. What's her name?
Heather.
Heather, thank you. Came back again and met for a half day with the whole, with the entire MAT team. And we went through a very similar process, a little abbreviated, going through a similar thing. And we came up with two versions of mission, vision, vision. And we also generated a list of values. So, you know, now we have three working versions of that. So what we decided to do at that point was hold some employee sessions. So we held four sessions over the next month or so. We had representatives from every single department. There was at least one or two people there from every single department. And we asked them to do a couple of things. We presented them with the three versions. We had some discussion around that, did some level setting about what's a mission, what's a vision, you know, why do we do this? And then we asked them to provide feedback on each of the versions. We also had them vote on their top three values, because we had listed about 20 different values. We asked them to vote on their top three. And then we also spent probably the, at least half of the time, going to each participant. And they had to talk about the three most important tasks in there, that they have to do in the next year. Many of those were operational, some of them were projects. It was a really interesting conversation to do that. And what we did with that information eventually, and you'll see it in the plan, is we started seeing some categories of the type of work. Some of it was operational, some of it was innovation, some of it was about better communication, those sorts of things. And those things are what you see when we get down to our strategic pillars. Sort of as a, kind of a way to categorize our work. And that's how we came up with those, since as a group, we didn't, hadn't really come up with those. So a key goal coming out of the employee sessions was for the communication team to take all of this input. And a lot of it was in conflict, you know, I love this one, I hate this one, you know. There was a lot of, but try to look at similar themes and values and come up with a draft plan that basically everyone who participated in the process could look at that, look at that mission, that vision, maybe those values, and see their work in it. That was, that was the idea that we were trying to achieve there. So then, as you know, we brought this proposed framework to the board. And the decision was made to put it on hold till Commissioner Shumpf had a chance to get up to speed and weigh in a little bit more. And I'm not totally sure how we do that unless you have opinions and we'll record them and we'll go back. Having said that, now I'd like to take a look at the plan and just make sure everybody's familiar with it again. So mission and mission again is, it defines the scope of our work. It's the purpose, it's why we exist. If somebody says, well, why do we even have government? This is it for us. We support our community through quality public service. That forms the foundation, if you will, I used a building metaphor, but that forms the foundation of the house. Everything on that foundation and inside of it is, should talk about the work that we do. If we're doing something that's not public service, we probably shouldn't be doing it, right? It's the scope of our work. Vision is that future look. It's not where we are today. It's what we want to be when we grow up. It's what we want to be in the future. It's what we aim for, it's what we strive for. In my metaphor about the building, I said, it defines the kind of building we're trying to build. Do you want to build a shack? Do you want to build something minimal? Or are you building something, you know, more, you know, multi-stories? What are you building? Okay? So it's where you want to go with this, from this foundation. We had a lot of themes that came through. I think quality of life was definitely a theme. And the uniqueness of this place was another theme that came through over and over, both the mission and vision discussion. So getting to a place where we are consistently delivering a high quality of life in a one-of-a-kind place was the terminology that the communication team came up with. The values, simply, we took the whole long list and all employees had voted for, that participated. And we had about 36 employees participate. They each chose three, and these are the ones that rose to the top. Maybe, you know, maybe we need some work on these, maybe they're too close and we should dig down the list further, whatever. But this is just purely, this was the vote. And then last were these strategic pillars that I talked about. And these are just categories of work, really, of, you know, strategies, of goals. That we're gonna align different things that we do, different projects, different efforts, different initiatives, to these things. And these were, these were just, you know, areas that seemed to rise up when employees talked about their work. So we talked about the need for, you know, communication strategies to always improve and build on transparency and openness and timeliness and proactiveness, both as an organization, but from a department level as well. That can be, how quick do we respond to emails? It can be a lot of different aspects to that. Service delivery is just, how do we, you know, everything that we do is a service. So how do we do that? Are there ways, projects to help us create more efficiency or improve our quality? Are there process improvement things between departments? You know, how do we become more customer focused in the way we deliver information and not just government focused? Those sorts of activities. Operations, that's just the day-in-and-day-out stuff. Our infrastructure, our buildings, you know, that kind of thing, our standards, how good is our documentation? Process improvement. I see process improvement has fallen into categories and probably depending on the purpose of it. Is it to improve our operations internally and become more efficient? Or is it about specifically impacting service delivery? So again, some of this needs to be flushed out a little more, but there's opportunities. Innovation rose to the top, new programs and services, ideas that people have, trying to be more proactive in the way we deliver our services. And technology was one of the things listed in there. So projects like the e-permitting project we did a couple of years ago would be in that, that kind of a category. And then last category was workforce. And this was about employee development, training of our staffs, culture, things that we do to make it look better for employee retention. So that's, that's what the communication team took all of that stuff, put it in a giant blender, and that's what we came out with. So that's the proposed form of this right now. So where do we go from here? We've, I think, lost a little momentum for a variety of reasons. People are busy, it's a busy time of the year, we've had some key staff turnover. So there's a number of things, but we're trying to get back on that. So we, when we met a few weeks ago at the communication committee, we, this was the plan that we laid out. So we met with the MAT team last week, went through the same information with them, kind of gave them a refresher. And today, we're meeting with the committee of the whole, which we promised we would do back in June. What we planned to do is schedule two to three open house sessions later this month. And those will be for employees. Because employees came, they spent half a day with us, or a couple of hours with us, and gave us a lot of input, but we really haven't gotten back to them. So what we really want to do now is show them, you know, what the results were, what all the information was that came back from those things, and talk through the process, how we came from, from the original drafts, took their input, and how we use that input to create what's there. We want, we want to do that. And we want to give them an opportunity to weigh in. Does this make sense to you? Do you like it? The things that do still change, are there things that are missing? Not that we'll take all of that feedback again, but I think in case, we want to hear it in case there's something big or some themes that are coming back that we really should be thinking about differently. And by the way, when we met with them, we told them, you're not gonna necessarily see what you've said exactly in this. There's a lot of people weighing in. But you should feel like, when you read it, you can see your job in it. You may not see your exact words or the exact words to the thing that you were thinking about, but you should still, the ideas and the theme should still resonate. So these meetings are gonna be led by myself and Valerie and Judy Hill. And will be, will be having a couple of articles leading up to this. We've already had one in the What's Cooking Weekly Employee Newsletter, where either Jeff or Valerie or somebody is putting in something about the importance of strategic planning. I know Jeff's been meeting with departments, at department meetings, and talking about that, trying to understand their work and some of the things. So we're trying to lay the groundwork for this a little bit, again, keep that theme in the air. Basically, I think I said, what we're gonna do is review the process and talk about the input. And give them, just give them a chance to say, you know, kind of verify that, yep, that's what they were thinking. We'll take that feedback again and any other feedback that you all have. And we'll take it and look at it again and see if there are any ways that we still need to improve this before we bring it to you one more time. So you all would be encouraged to come to those employee meetings if you want to. They're not public meetings. I think this is, you know, it's, they're opportunities for employees to talk about their work environment. So if you come, you would need to arrange your schedules so that not more than two of you come to those meetings. And we would also, and MAT, the MAT group has also been invited. But we've asked that if you come, you come as an observer and let the employees talk about this, because it's their session to do that. And then the last, the next step after that, let's say we get to a draft, everybody loves it, we're moving on. Next thing after that is actually put some meat on these bones. Go back to those strategic pillars. And what are the specific activities that we're going to do that help us measure our progress to that vision? And so we'll do that by going department by department. We'll have members of the communication team facilitate that meeting with the department head. And we'll talk about the work in that department and their projects and their goals. And try to get to some measurable projects and goals that we can put into this plan and we can be, we can start working on and measuring our progress to this vision. So that's what I got. Anybody have questions, comments? Jeff, I know you maybe had some comments to...
Generally, the larger, you guys can just turn up and just grab spots. The general conversation around this that we've had in the committee and that we had at the MAT team is, it's really, we feel that the communications group has kind of been charged with, from the board directors and the MAT team, to go forward and develop something, a vision that pulls us forward, that identifies who we are, what we are, why we are, and gives us a target for what we might be several years down the road. And we need to make, take that position and as a committee, make a recommendation to you as a board to affirm that, yes, this is the right direction. This is, this is what we should doing. Everything we do should fit under the primary umbrella of this mission and vision statement that we're proposing. And then we should use that as the standard by which we measure all the work that we do, department by department, job by job. What is it that we're doing? Is it, is it our responsibility? Is it the right thing that we've done? Is it something we've chosen to do? Make sure that everything meets those standards so that when we come to budgeting times, when we come to talking about the services that we prepare, we know why we do what we do. Everything should fall from the very basic mission and vision. And if we don't have that in place, it's very hard for us to have any general conversations about policy or values or anything like that. So this is really just an update to say, we need to get back on track. We need to get this in place so that we can use it to affect all the rest of the policy that we do. And we really do, we're checking in with you to make sure that that's correct. That our plans that Rena just outlined meet with your expectations of what we're gonna be doing with this.
Mr. Bishop.
No, I brought this up before, so I feel bad about it, but I think it's great overall. And especially with the pillars and getting, and working those through. And, you know, I'm a behavioralist, and I've been through a lot of these in my career and different organizations. And one thing that concerns me always is that we, you know, we make statements that are deliverable. And so, or behavioral, or can be measured. So, and I know vision is vision, and I brought this up before, but, you know, when I'd be delivering a high quality of life in a one-of-a-kind place, how do you measure delivering a high quality of life? So I would suggest if you could go more toward providing services to improve quality of life in a one-of-a-kind place, you know, so that you can say, these are indicators of quality, so, and there's maybe other ways to do it. And I don't want to take issue with it, because I think the concept is good. But to me, mission and vision should have something that we can identify, because someone will say, well, I don't know if it's the county's rule to deliver high quality of life, that's a person's choice. I mean, it's too promissory, you know. So I would rather say, you know, providing opportunities or services or something. It's something that concerns me, I guess, that it should be something that we can identify. I don't know if we have to measure it, but it certainly has, I think it has to be behavioral.
In reference to that, Commissioner, we do have measures in state and place. There's annual performance measures about the quality of life that the state of Minnesota does for every single county. And we do have performance measures and we do have opportunities to impact that. And that's largely the work we do in public services. We spend a good portion of the day talking about it this morning. And if we want to really do something, we don't have to. If we don't set a standard up here that challenges us, then we're just gonna be processing paperwork. Are we really good at processing and following rules? And you guys set that standard. But I would, I would ask the question, do we not want to set a goal that scares us a little bit? Do we not want to reach for something more than we currently are?
So what are those indicators of high quality of life that the county delivers?
I will share that, I'll get that to all of you. The measures that they, if none of you have seen the state health report that breaks down county by county, you have. Some of you have seen it in a packet in the time that I've been here. But I'll make sure that you have access to it. But quality of life is measured in lots of different ways. And we do well here in several measures, and we do poorly here in several measures. And one of them is the high quality of life we have with access to recreational features. And one of the reasons that we do poorly is because we're a small company and we don't have resources. And that is, those are general trends throughout the state. I'm happy to be here. I keep making reference to the fact that I was in Menoma before this. Menoma consistently ranks 87 out of 87 in health outcomes.
So we're talking about health outcomes here.
Well, health outcome is certainly one measure of quality of life.
It's also clean water.
Economic indicators are another indicator of quality of life.
I just have trouble with delivering, we can provide.
I think the measurable pieces that where we measure our progress, another place anyway, is is once we define projects and efforts and the outcomes that are associated with those, that are aligned to our strategic pillars.
I think that's a, one of the measurable spots you must take.
We should, Kirk, you and your group have a second role. Did you just hear? You've probably already done this, but when you do the employee outreach, can you do like, community center and highway department as locations besides here so that everyone...
That's what we did last time. We were at the log cabin last time.
Perfect. I figured you did, I just wanted to make sure.
I felt like a retreat over there. It was really fun. It was like a cabin.
Agent Sterling.
Thank you, Ma'am. Well, I appreciate the time, because it took a little while to absorb when you first presented it to the board. Because I remember, yeah, proactive, I think I had that word, and it's here.
You saw your word.
I had one word, anyway. And you're planning two or three open houses, so when do you think you'd want to start that?
Well, the intention is to do that yet this month. So the last, maybe week of August or something like that. But we wanted to meet with you all first to make sure that this approach was good with you and also with the MAT team. So it may bleed into September a little bit, but it will be within the...
Can I ask, Commissioner, have you guys participated in any strategic planning processes lately? Within your department or at the RTC level, or have you participated in any processes that similar?
Yeah, I think we're gonna start.
And a quick reminder, because I've had people ask, as a matter of fact, I had Steve Harson ask me, he says, do you guys have a plan that we can follow? And I said, no, but we'll walk him down the path. And then he said, well, I'd love to participate if I can. And just a reminder that the city did a big public outreach when they're doing their general plan. And we're not, we're not, they got a grant for six figures to have this comprehensive study done. We're not proposing that. We're proposing that we're gonna take a good number of those assumptions as being consistent that are applied to the city, that also apply to the county, that do. And we're really doing a strategic plan within our organization as the employees who are tasked with providing the services. So we're not going to be doing a large public outreach as this portion of this strategic planning. This is an internal strategic planning for us to be able to know, are we doing the things that we're supposed to be doing? Are we doing the things that have an impact in the community? Once we get done with that, there may be a public outreach component. But we're not doing a comprehensive plan like the city did, because we don't have, we haven't allocated resources to do that. We haven't allocated any resources to do this project. We're basically picking it up as another committee that about half a dozen of us are serving on.
Great. Can you go back to the committee, please, thank them for the time and work in regrouping and throwing a curveball and a restart? It's important.
Hitting curveballs is an important skill, too. If you don't, you're struck down.
Yeah, this looks, cooking down all the words, I think it's...
Well, you can, no, I mean, Valerie, of course, she's so talented, puts something like this together overnight. But when, you know, when we settle on this and we have a plan that we really want to share and publish in the community, there will be a lot of text talking about the specific projects and how, and how those projects help us reset the vision and what they do for the quality of life. And there'll be a lot, a lot of those loose ends will be tied together in the way that we communicate this, both to our employees and externally.
And so, Mr. Neville just mentioned there may be a public component. So how will that be determined? Whether it's a presentation or, I know we, you know, at the start of this process, we had a public presentation. So do you envision a presentation or, I realize it's really an internal process.
Yep, I don't anticipate there being a public portion of this, of this process until we get done with it. And then we determine if it's appropriate for us to go anyways. The other, the other chapters in the comprehensive plan that we also talked about, so we did a land use guide plan that we finished up last year. This is kind of an internal strategic plan that's about the way we do our work. We know we need to do a transportation plan. We know we need to do some other plans, and each of these are gonna be chapters within a comprehensive plan. And each one of those, some of those have required public input processes. And then when we look at the impact that some of these could potentially have, we'll also incorporate those processes as needed. But this strategic planning is a narrow volume. Let's talk about the work that we do and the staff that we have, and how do we best, how do we best do that?
And then when it comes to what kind of work, that's where the public, what other projects is...
This is, this is really not, hopefully this will help us do some, some of the definition that we talked about in Health and Human Services. How do we best deliver the services we're tasked with? And how do we look for opportunities to refine those processes and look for efficiencies? I hope that that's what we do, but this is not the big outside-the-box look at what are we doing in the community.
I think one of the things that, that I like, what I heard from, from individual employees, was the need to collaborate more. So much of our work does cross department lines, and yet we've done a lot of that work within boxes. And this gives us an opportunity, if we have common goals, you know, that aren't just our department goals, but bigger goals that we, that we try to achieve as a county government, that it gives us ways to look across those department lines and say, if we do this together, we deliver this service better. You know, seeing that service is not within a box and that the handoff's a, you know, black box and the handoff's a here and now it's your service. But seeing, seeing that bigger picture of service, that's, that's what we deliver together.
So the new process?
Yes. And it's, it's a very important part, is to make sure that we're aligned, that when we do our work, that we're aligned.
I've got a testimony. I was talking to a person last night, and we were talking about, you know, county government. And this is unsolicited, what, unsolicited. And she was explaining how she was trying to plot some way in and deal with septics and then build a bridge and all these things. And she said, I came into the courthouse and I went to the land services department and everyone was there and they were helping me. She said, well, I went in four or five years ago about the same topic, I got the runaround. So I said, oh, lean. So I mean, that's, that's really strong. I think when, when, you know, someone says, wow, what a difference that makes. And their whole attitude about everything changes. I mean, and of course, I've been in public service my whole life and, or my working life, and that's what it's all about. By providing those services, you enhance people's quality of life. Thanks for the opportunity to share that, and it's timely.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I think Bill Lane, today, when he was talking about the conditional use permit, he talked about, one of, one of the reasons that I really felt this was important to us is I've heard people say things that are inconsistent with my idea of delivery of service to the public. Some of them come from our staff, some of them come from the public. But today I heard from Bill Lane, he said his job was to help these people walk through the process. And I think that every one of our staff should understand what the processes are, that they're responsible for, how they work across department lines. We've got significant challenge. If somebody needs a road sign out in the outlying, unorganized territories of the county right now, we have a real problem. We don't know who's supposed to do it. And we're working on that. We're developing that capacity and we're working our way through this problem. But how do we strategically do those things? And then how do we answer people's requests when they ask for something that reasonably we should be able to provide? You know, do we, the old crazy, if you ever worked at Menards and if you don't have to, I don't recommend it, but if you have to.
You work there or just go there?
Their standard is if somebody asks you a question, you don't tell them where it is. You bring them to where it is. You show them where it is. And I think that that's a great service standard. And you see that happen here all the time. Anybody that spends any time back and forth in the hallways, if somebody walks in the door and looks at the board and doesn't know immediately where they're going, somebody's going to not just direct them down the hall, they're going to walk them down the hall to the right place. But county government is confusing. Sometimes I even walk them to the wrong door.
I would, but I don't know where they're going.
Part of the challenge with this is sometimes people don't know what their question is.
Right.
And the way that somebody would ask a question initially, I would take them to the assessor's office when they really need to go to the auditor's office. You know, because everybody has their hands on different portions of that business. So, thinking about how we provide service and thinking about how we help people with their questions about county government is why this is important.
Maybe this will drive it in the future, but, or maybe it's not worth it in a smaller system like this. But do we have a go-to person in the courthouse and, you know, when you don't know what to do, go to here?
Jeff?
Brady gets most of those questions, I guess, because he's got a window.
So, they go to, okay. Fine. And that's public and?
We used to have a public window, but we could cut that staff person and now it's our office supply room. So, I mean, that.
But I think the public should know.
That's a service that many local units of government had was a receptionist who just was there to publicly greet everybody and direct them to the proper staff. And it's a position that was eliminated here. And maybe that's okay. Maybe that's okay. Some people don't like calling and getting a phone tree. They want somebody to answer. But how do we serve that same need with the arrangement that they're currently having? One of our challenges is we got this big room that everybody walks into this general room and you can't see anybody. And if you read the signs, the sign, it's really hard to tell, which for me, if you're visual, it's hard to tell which way you're supposed to go if you're looking for one office or the other.
There was somebody wandering around the basement the other day looking for, I think, the auditor's office because the arrow pointed down.
Points down.
Yeah, because you only have a two-dimensional.
Yep. So, I mean, so there are challenges and there are ways to think through those.
When my grandma worked for the county, she was in the basement. And so, if you did have an auditor question, you.
Yeah, there actually were quite a few people down there.
Nina was down there, I think, a while.
Great. Anything else you want us to consider?
Thank you, Nina. Thanks for inviting us in twos.
I'll let you know when those are. You guys can.
Where I can help you up here. You can show us where to call.
In between all the other meetings. There you go. Very good.
So, the next item that we had on our agenda was, we had George here back in June, I think, originally.
A while ago, yep.
A while ago. And he wanted to have some time to discuss with the board and committee the whole about the carbon fee dividend proposal. And I will, I'm going to apologize because at two o'clock I have to leave. I've got a board meeting in Virginia this afternoon.
Oh, we'll have this wrapped up by two.
Well, then we'll have this wrapped up by two. The only comment that I will make is after our meeting in June is I went and I talked to Matt Hilgert at AMC. And I said, "What, is this on your radar? Is this on anybody's radar? Is this going on here?" And he said, "You know, this really isn't, it's the same conversation that we had previously. This isn't in our authority. We're appealing to the federal government to make a change." And he said, "Of course, AMC is not going to be taking any responsibility in this because it's not, it's not at the local unit of government our responsibility."
Right.
But it is our responsibility to be educated and understand how these things impact us. And that's why George is here to give us some more background on that.
Okay. Yeah. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about this again. In our cover letter, we, well, first I should say that my accomplice, Olya, couldn't make it today. She had piano lessons. Likely excuse. But we have two asks. One was to endorse carbon fee and dividend by resolution and pass that on to congressional regulation delegation. Hopefully let them know that we care about climate change and that we think carbon fee and dividend is, you know, worth looking into and is a pretty good possible solution. The other ask was that the county engage in a process of trying to reduce carbon emissions throughout the county. And a few years ago, we actually produced a county energy plan. That was, I believe Jim Johnson was on that committee. But it was, took a year. We got a grant. We did an energy plan. In a sense, it is a climate action plan. And so, we're hoping that the county would, you know, kind of look at that and maybe go through a process of prioritizing some action items and taking some actions to reduce carbon emissions in county government, but also throughout the county. I just kind of wanted to kind of start with carbon fee and dividend and just kind of go through, frame that a little bit. I think we went over that climate change is bad last time I talked to you. I characterize it as the systematic degradation of the earth's capacity to support civilization. Also like to frame it as a humanitarian crisis, not a environmental crisis alone. So, we really have to do something about this. And I know everyone listens to the news and the science is getting more clear, the effects are getting worse. We really need to solve this. Carbon fee and dividend is something that I think has a lot of potential. And I wanted to, I think we've kind of contrasted that against what we're doing now, which is kind of a mishmash of state and federal regulations, subsidies and standards. And so, and those vary state to state and they vary year to year. And what that's, and that's done a lot of good things. I mean, it's brought down the cost of solar panels, it's brought down the cost of wind energy. But it's also got some limitations. Because these subsidies and standards and regulations and rules are so variable, it stifles investment in renewable energy and in energy transition. And it also stifles the transition itself. So, we could be moving much faster. So, the way we're doing this is kind of haphazard. It's patchwork. It's not terribly effective. I've been working with Cook County Local Energy Project for about eight years on creating more local energy, local, clean local renewable energy in Cook County. And we've done some things, but you know, all in all, we put in about twenty solar panels. We put in a dozen solar thermal panels at the Grand Marie Recreation Park. We've done some educational stuff. But all in all, it's pretty tough work. It's pretty slow going. And I just handed out those two graphs for you because I think those really hammer home where we're at with fighting climate change. We're losing the battle. We're not going quick enough. We need more radical action on this. It's, we're really not getting the job done. And again, that mirrors my own personal experience with how difficult that is to achieve some renewable energy development locally. And that's why carbon fee and dividend is so promising and so important. The reason we are having trouble with instituting energy transition is because of price. CCLAP runs up against us all the time. We want to put in solar panels, it's too expensive. We want to put in solar thermal, it's too expensive. Biomasses, it's too expensive. The problem is, is that fossil fuels are artificially cheap because they don't include the cost of carbon emissions in their price. And so, the marketplace doesn't have the right signals to produce the desired result. So, for instance, I run a restaurant. I could really reduce my costs and pass that on to my customers if I threw my garbage in the harbor. Society doesn't let me do that, which is a good thing. But, you know, so that's an example of the cost of something need to be incorporated in the price of the product for the marketplace to work and for people to make the right decisions, which would be to invest more in renewable energy and to avert climate change, which as I just said, is very bad. So, carbon fee and dividend gets that done. It assigns a cost to carbon in a very effective way, in a way that is projected to actually be effective enough to reduce carbon emissions to the extent where we really need to do to change those graphs that I just handed out. You know, if we really want to reduce the earth's temperature, if we really want to reduce the carbon in the atmosphere, we have to do something as radical as carbon fee and dividend, as radical as a revenue neutral carbon tax. The other benefit or the other attribute of carbon fee and dividend that's very hopeful is that it's market-based and that makes it bipartisan. It has support among our conservative friends. And finally, it's fair-ish. That is, it's probably about as fair as possible of a solution to climate change as we can get at. And I know as public officials, fairness is something you have to deal with a lot.
In their plan.
Always. I mean, anything's just a little bit unfair, you're going to hear about it right away. And so, carbon fee and dividend is this huge thing we will try to do. And we're going to talk a lot about, well, is that fair, you know? Who's winning? Who's losing? That's going to be a huge issue. It's going to be very difficult. But you need to compare that against the fairness of climate change itself. And I think I talked, last time I talked to you about the huge social inequities of climate change and that it's the poor people and disenfranchised people that will suffer the effects of climate change, especially first. So, climate change is very much of a social justice issue and climate change is not fair. And I think that issue comes up when we talk about the economic effects, especially, Bobby, you had brought up the economic effect on a small business. You know, and how many, how much is, who's the winners and who's the losers? And how bad is that going to be? And again, so there's some unfairness in carbon fee and dividend, but not as much as in unabated climate change. So, a couple of items I sent in your packet, one was a newspaper article for, was it in the Wall Street Journal about the Climate Leadership Council? It's a Republican climate change organization that has put out their own revenue neutral carbon tax proposal. It's run by George Schultz and James Baker. And I included that because it really shows the economic viability of revenue neutral carbon tax. Because these guys are, you know, they're Republican economists. I mean, you know, if they're thinking this is a good idea for the economy, that shows that it's not just the carbon fee and dividend folks. And their proposal is very similar to carbon fee and dividend as we proposed to you. It's really very close and, yeah, there are some slight differences. The other bit of news, I sent you a bit of news on the House Climate Solutions Caucus. And I think last time I talked to you, there were about fifty members and you have to join two by two. It's again, United States House of Representatives, one Republican, one Democrat. For a couple of years, that was stalled at twenty-four members, so twelve and twelve. And then just this last year, it's gone up to fifty-two members, which really shows a willingness on, within the Republican Party to start taking climate change seriously. And I think that shows that, you know, that lobbying for something like carbon fee and dividend could really make a difference. Also, Representative Nolan joined that caucus just a couple of months ago. So, a little bit of news, a little bit of hopeful news there. And then finally, the other bit of, well, I gave you the entire regional economic RME study. But I also picked out a few pages that talk about the economic effects of carbon fee and dividend. And so, I hope you had a chance to look at that. And with that, I think I'm done. I guess that those pages about the economic effects, you know, really get at what, Bobby, you had brought up about the front-end loader business and how would they do? And I think, you know, if you look at these graphs, what it shows is, again, there are winners and losers, but mostly businesses kind of break even on this. If your business is oil refining or supplying oil refineries, it's going to be tough. But for most sectors, the effect is really pretty negligible. And again, this is about as fair as I think we're going to get. And if you want to look at some of those graphs, we can. Yeah, I think I'll leave it at that. Jeff's got a whole other fourteen minutes.
Any questions, comments for George?
I guess I did include a resolution, the resolution that the city council passed. And I guess that would be a template for what I would hope the county board would consider. It's pretty reasonably written, I think, and I think it would translate well.
That's the same one that we saw previously. We can do a copy of it in your inbox.
Is this trending around the country, towns, counties, local governments are passing resolutions like this?
Yeah, I think there's at least fifty now between cities and counties around the United States that have passed resolutions of support.
I got a question because I did a little search on this and I went to the Yale Environmental Studies Site and hit a little thing on it. And I don't know. I mean, I'm an advocate to doing things about climate change, so I'm not trying to question anything. But as far as intentions, I guess I sometimes have questions about what are we doing and why? But it says here, "At mid-June two thousand and sixteen, the U.S. House of Representatives voted overwhelmingly to stand against future proposals for a carbon tax, even though no current bill was anywhere near getting its serious attention. Opponents in that symbolism, which congregational moment, saw the importance of laying down a political marker. Or say a future Hillary Clinton administration looked to push the idea. Carbon tax supporters saw it as pure political theater." Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, that happened a while ago. You know, and I think that's a political statement. I think when you really get down and, well, I think there are people within the House of Representatives that understand that climate change is a big problem. And more and more are understanding that and more and more are feeling the need to do something about it.
So, you think that it's because they're against climate change or not for the carbon tax?
Well, you know, for some reason, climate change has become this political issue. I think that's changing as the facts keep coming in. And so, I think both. I think that there's movement towards accepting climate change as a real problem. And I think once you do that, then there's a movement to start looking for solutions that are bipartisan and that are market-based. And that's kind of why carbon fee and dividend and other revenue neutral carbon taxes have been developed the way they have been and why they have that limited amount of conservative report that, conservative support that they do. I mean, really, you know, I'm not really qualified to answer questions about the United States Congress.
Well, I'm just proud of you.
It's kind of my take on it, yeah.
Mrs. Sterling, your question? Thank you. Well, George, in reviewing the resolution.
Well, George, in reviewing the resolution, the city passed the resolution that you asked.
Admittedly.
Yeah. And if the county would pass it, what would that do for your cause? Would you be able to take it other places to say, "Look, Grand Marie City Council and the county passed this." What would that do for future?
I think it's a, it's a political statement. It's a political issue. It would certainly be sent to our congressional delegation, our two senators and our representative. And so they would hear from the people of Cook County that this is an important issue and that carbon fee and dividend, I think the way the resolutions worded, you know, the specifics of the policy aren't in there, but it's just in general, this is a revenue neutral carbon tax is a good idea. Please discuss this and implement this on the national level through the processes available to you. So I think it's a worthwhile political statement here to try to solve an important problem.
So this is a more toward the carbon fee and dividend than how we can, as a county, reduce carbon emissions?
Yeah, kind of two separate issues.
Okay.
Related, but separate.
I'd like to make a comment. You brought up Jenny, the, what can the county do as far as reducing carbon emissions? And in general, any type of energy consumed is usually, that energy is generated by the discharge of carbon dioxide. Most of the generating facilities for power that's delivered up here is from coal-fired generators or from natural gas-fired generators. And so, you know, what can the county do? Well, I'm very grateful for the number of lights that you have in here. As I get older, I have less ability to see unless I have a lot of lumens on my paper. But I'm just wondering, what are the light bulbs that you've got in those cans?
We just changed them to LEDs.
Well, not just, we changed them quite some time ago.
Are they LEDs?
To LEDs and not only that, we have, sorry, public, buttload of switches over there. And so we can turn them down and up and half on and half off and so we-
Good.
And they're not on when we're not here in this room, they're off.
Good. Well, those are the types of things that I think, you know, at the local level are things that you can do and obviously you've already done. And you're to be applauded for having accomplished that. But I think it goes along with what George is talking about here. That's one of your deliverables. This is something you've done to try and cut your carbon emissions and reduce your carbon footprint. And as a whole, you know, the people of the county or the citizens of the county have the opportunity to do the same thing within their own homes and also to make a statement as far as being supportive of the idea of a revenue neutral way of reducing carbon emissions. Otherwise, the increasing temperature worldwide coupled with the amount of energy that has to be released when you have these mega storms that assault the coasts and so forth, is going to result in more and more damage, more and more costs, more and more insurance outlays. And I think ultimately, economics is going to be a driver as far as forcing this society to do something about making changes that will reduce the amount of carbon that's going into the atmosphere and dumping that additional amount of energy into the atmosphere that the atmosphere doesn't seem to have the capability to assimilate or spread out evenly. So just a comment, just a reflection from myself.
I'd like to make one comment. I'm very supportive of any efforts that we can be doing with climate change. And I guess when it comes to policy or resolutions, I would like us to, you know, be, you know, consider where it's going to be in the future. I know I'm dealing with an issue that came up in 2010 with the county board and I don't want to get into it. And is that applicable to what's going on today? You know, and, but the county's position is from that resolution in 2010. So I think when you do these things, I want to be supportive, but I think somewhat cautious too. And I would like us to maybe consider, you know, such as carbon tax renewal. I talked to my daughter, she's developing, she typically teaches calculus at UMD. And she's now developing a course in the math department called Mathematics of Climate Change. And so I asked her about this and, you know, she's a mathematician, so that's only one point of view. And, you know, we talked about the carbon tax and issue and, you know. So I guess, you know, there's other ways of doing this and we may have a better way from a lot of science and so forth, but this seems like to be a real reasonable thing to do. So my point is, I want to be supportive, but I would like to say it in reference to such as, if we do it, you know, rather than say, "This is the way we're going to go." Because I, I, I just am concerned about that.
Yeah, well, I think voicing support for carbon fee and dividend doesn't preclude other actions. At least the way the resolution's worded and you can certainly take a look at that and make sure you're comfortable with it. Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yes, thank you. And I don't have it in front of me, so. I just wanted to make that point, but in no way do I want to deter or imply anything negative to your efforts.
Bobby, how do we do on our, addressing your concerns about the front-end loader business? Did you happen to get a look at the GDP, do I have major industries graph?
No.
Okay. That's too bad.
I support your, the climate change thing, but I still won't support a fee. That's just where I stand.
Yeah, okay. I mean, so that front-end loader business?
Well, it comes with, I think, all businesses. You charge 15 cents a gallon or whatever it is there, that's just the trickle-down effect.
It increases their costs, yes?
Just like, I know a couple of people that sell stuff to you from ground borders will increase their costs.
Right. But the idea is that that money is then returned to consumers, so consumers-
So what's the point of charging if you're getting it back?
Well, the point is, is that it's a cost shift where that, things that have more carbon and they'll get more expensive relative to other things, but everything in general stays the same. So it increases the cost of things that take carbon to produce them, which is kind of everything. But over time, people will choose and manufacturers will actually innovate to produce less carbon-intensive goods and services. And customers who have this extra money are going to, you know, do what customers do. They'll buy the low-cost alternative, which is increasingly going to be the lower-carbon content alternative. So if someone's making front-end loaders and someone can come up with an electric front-end loader, then that's going to be quite a bit cheaper to operate, you know, given that that electricity is produced with renewable energy. But that's what happens over time. So again, it's economically, I mean, if you take a look at some of these graphs, the economy actually does better than without the, without the tax. And the reason for that is because you're taking, you're basically taking money out of the fossil fuel industry, which is very non-labor intensive, and you're putting it into a new emerging industry that's more labor-intensive. And that just spurs so much economic activity that there's just more money flowing around. The other, the other slight way it improves the economy is because it's slightly progressive in that the carbon tax affects people based on how much carbon they use. So poor people don't use a lot of carbon, so they're less affected by the tax. Rich people who buy a lot of stuff and fly around a lot, they're more affected by the tax. So the tax is slightly progressive in that it is more economically beneficial for poorer folks, a little less economically beneficial for richer folks, and poor people tend to spend their money more than rich people. So there's two ways that that actually stimulates the actual economy. So I really think that front-end loader business is going to be just fine. I mean, it's not like front-end loaders go away.
I think it comes down every time. Heck, if that gets 17 miles per hour.
You got one that gets 17, mine gets 11.
Which is a diesel, Ken.
150 miles away from the nearest.
George makes a great point. And the typical way that policy changes in state, local, and federal in this country is through a very incremental process. And we adjust one thing and then go, "Oh, well, that happened and this happened and we didn't expect that." And this proposal is to completely pick up, throw away, and put something else in place and say, "This is a much more fair and equitable representation of marketplace." You know, we claim to have a market economy, yet there's so many incentives built in different places that you couldn't ever actually measure the impact of market. You know, really, every, every market is toyed with or incented at some place. So if that isn't going to work, then at some point, somebody's going to have to propose throwing an old scheme out and putting a new scheme in its place that makes a lot more sense. The problem with that is, it's incredibly difficult. And even people who understand the need to do something different, to completely overhaul the system, don't really have any idea of where to start. And in all honesty, I think that's why these conversations are happening at the local level, because until there's enough support and demand from a local level to change the way we do things, there isn't going to be a whole lot of impetus to change anything where they have the authority to do that.
Can I add? So as the coordinator of the Cook County Local Energy Project and having referenced the local energy plan, when that plan was put in place, a number of local people were surveyed about their various concerns. And almost 70% of the people agreed that climate change was of a high concern. And so I think as the board considers this matter, you can refer to the energy plan and look at those numbers, knowing that the vast majority of constituents find this of great concern. And to Jeff's point about replacing a big system with another system, I had the opportunity to hear Katia Gordon present on carbon fee and dividend last fall. And she is with the Citizens Climate Lobby. And to look at a piece of paper and try to understand it, I think is really hard. But to hear someone who is really well-versed in the numbers and the plan is very helpful. And carbon fee and dividend actually takes place over a very long number of years. So any fees that are going to be instituted because the coke industries are getting taxed at their plant and trickling down the cost of their pricing to the consumer is going to be quite gradual. And so I think it would be, I think, helpful and beneficial to really look over the Citizens Climate Lobby website and try to understand the progressive fees rather than, you know, everyone's going to get hit really hard right away. And it is, I think, a very fair way of making that larger change. Because you can have 50 homes that add solar panels, which is a really great thing, but until the large fossil fuel industries are held accountable, that system is not going to change. And we're all sort of enslaved to their gas prices and the prices that are set by the market that isn't actually priced to hold them accountable for carbon output and carbon pollution. So that's what I would add.
You could have 100% of the population say they're concerned and would like something done about the climate change, but you're not going to get 100% people that are going to tell you they're going to pay for that.
But I think, I agree. But until they see it working or have a better understanding, then the change isn't, isn't going to happen and things are going to get worse.
But Heidi, you do understand that two-thirds of the people actually make out economically better with carbon fee and dividend. So they don't have to pay, they actually make money on this.
You're not appealing logic and numbers, are you?
Yeah, I was trying to get to my heart.
But that's the idea.
He also knows my heart is covered in black.
Yeah.
Mass. I, I would love to talk to our legislators, you know? I don't like when the county board makes resolutions and sends things off and tells our legislators what to do without actually talking to them about it first. So I mean, this is a conversation that I would like, when they come to talk to us, to sit down and ask. Yeah. Eklund and Bach and anyone else and, you know, to go to AMC and get a chance to talk with them, it's nice to just have the conversation and see where they're at, but-
Yeah, I mean-
It's cause and effect, you know, and Myron says, "Decisions made by this board in 2010 are affecting us now. We need to take a look at the decisions we make and how they affect everywhere else." And your name is?
I'm Nancy Belling and I just-
Hi Nancy.
Wanted to comment, first of all, on, you're actually, for most of us, average, normal people will be getting money back to offset what the extra that we're going to pay. I think your point about businesses is where, you know, it might, in their business themselves, it's going to be certainly more of an upfront cost, but not to individuals who are ultimately paying for their gas at the pump. You're going to get a rebate check for that, for the extra that you're paying. The other thing I wanted to say and why I'm here to support George is that I really think that we have to start at the local level. And I know you guys don't have any power to legislate it, but you do have the power to pass on, yeah, in Cook County, we really, we really support effective things that can be done to combat climate change. And with that, I'd also like to suggest that the county adopt its own plan of these are the things that we could do. And I'd be happy to pass on my suggestions about that at another time.
Great. Anything else?
I would point out that this is a federal, so you'd be lobbying Klobuchar and Franken and-
Nutter.
Nolan. Right. I mean, the proposal is a national one. There are states considering carbon taxes, so it's not a bad idea to talk to Bach and Eklund.
Yeah, I see it more as a human energy problem than that this plan wouldn't work. It's just the humans to actually make it happen. I mean, I just, this is August in Cook County and like, I have no energy to even think about this right now. But, and I think that's, you know, we live in a very intense environment and we're battling for our lives, our energy, energetic lives on a daily basis. I'm not saying that this is not worthy of top priority, but, and I also applaud you for being champions because without you being champions and, and George, you've been a champion for a long time with these issues. And really, without that, a lot of stuff wouldn't have happened and won't. So I really appreciate your, your human energy and, because I think it's really a human energy thing way more than it's a mind problem.
Yeah, I was just trying to think, I don't think the county would actually have to do anything. I think this would all be done on the federal level, which I just-
So all we have to do is pass the resolution.
Exactly. It's easy.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
You know, it would be handled by the IRS and Treasury Department and Customs.
And you're implying that changing people's minds doesn't require energy or changing a whole philosophy-
Well, that was your point, yeah.
A way of life does not require energy because it does.
It requires incentive.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I think there's a target- Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I think there's a cart and a horse issue, you know, which came first, or something, the chicken and the egg. But I, I mean, I hear you, I, I agree, I want it to be, but I, I, and I know each one of us is serving on like 30 committees and we all have jobs and we're, you know, so yes, I, I could get behind that resolution, but I'm not going to champion that. I mean, if that's all you're asking us to do.
I'd like to offer one, one more comment. The comment about parallels, and I think there's a parallel here between what the public thought about lighting, incandescent lights and LEDs. And it took a federal mandate that said, no more incandescent lights, you have to replace them with something that's more energy-efficient before it finally came about. Now that they've got the LEDs in place and their electric bills are being reduced, they're, they're starting to absorb the, the economics and also the rationale behind putting in energy-conserving devices. But I think there is a parallel here. I just say that the general public wasn't all that thrilled with the idea of taking all their incandescent lights and, and you couldn't buy any more at the local hardware store, but the transition did come about.
Mandates work.
I was one person who fought it, because I did not like that brightness. It was just way too bright. Well, now we have bulbs that are a little more reasonable. But as I said when Olya came, it takes a person like, a little person like that with new eyes to look at something. And really what we're talking about is the next generation. I mean, we may never receive any kind of benefits from any of this. I haven't anyway, have you?
Uh, no, you're averting something that's bad could happen in the future.
Yeah, right. But anyway, she was just delightful in her presentation and gave me pause to think about, you know, it's the next generation and beyond that, with the new eyes to look at how we can start now.
I, I would just like to comment too, that I think we need to give more discussion to this and especially what we can do as a county to deal with these issues. So somewhere down the line, it's going to cost money to taxpayers, I'm sure, because it's going to involve staff, but, you know, I think we should keep this in the discussion. I'll just leave this with you, the, the one thing I'd like to reference and I just sort of there. The Congressional, Congressional Budget Office ran some numbers on a scenario of the, the tax, of what impact it would have, especially it's sort of, their concern here is that it affects the poor people more because it's more of their budget, so.
Well, that's the opposite of.
Yes, so just, I mean, I don't want to argue about anything like that, but it makes a point. That's from the Yale Climate, Yale Climate Studies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your effort with this.
Well, you're welcome.
It's worth it.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess I, I, you know, again, we did make two requests in our, you know, and I guess I would like to know if that's going to happen, you know.
The county of the whole cannot move that.
Oh, I know that, but I'm just talking about, you know, when might we expect action by the county board on those two issues?
I don't know.
Okay, that's a fair answer, but that's what we'd like to know.
But we're up to here in budget right now.
Then it's okay if I pass to you on that later?
Sure.
Sure. Yeah, I think this is something that, you know, I still need some convincing in carbon tax.
Okay.
I do, I mean, but I would support that as an effort to deal with climate change, but I, the mathematics are not matching up for me. I'm a mathematician.
And so is your daughter, so is your daughter, is she?
No, I think she's, I'm very supportive of this. I just am cautious about buying into, you know, a packaged deal and saying, this is it. I, I want to know more about it and, and bet it more and I don't know if I have the time, but that's just my nature.
Yeah, and maybe that's something in the wording, it can be not so specific that it makes you uncomfortable.
Yeah, I mean, and I have studied, I did some searches on it and I talked to my daughter because she's involved in this from, only from the mathematics perspective, you know, and this is, this is also a very tribalistic, you know, political issue. And so, and, and that's fine, I'm willing to stand up on that one, but, and I don't want to imply at all that there's anything wrong with the carbon tax, I just have to be careful what I support.
So Myron, are you volunteering to put together a resolution with George that we can vote for?
We could volunteer Jeff as well.
No, I, I think we should look at a resolution and I definitely think we need to make a commitment to, as a county, to do whatever we can in, you know, negating any effort or any, you know, implications that we have with climate change, but there's going to have to be a long-term, you know, feasibility issue with that. But I'm willing to look at some kind of wording. I mean, I'm a, I've been a supporter of this since the 80s, I mean, since Alvin Toffler's Future Shock and I was in charge of curriculum and one of the things we implemented was an environmental education program and we were talking about climate change then in, in the science field.
There you go, you're a step ahead, you have Myron to help you put together a resolution.
Would all of you be comfortable in asking Jeff to look at the climate, your, I'm sorry, the energy plan and kind of coming up with?
In November.
Some low-hanging fruits perhaps?
Seriously, we're looking for a highway engineer, we're down a highway engineer and a public health services director.
Yeah, fall would be great, honey.
And now with half of our attorney's office.
And have, yeah, so we're, we're a little in a staffing crisis right now, so, well, maybe we could all contribute a little bit as we look at this Yale study and we look at other things, we could all contribute something. For October, November. Yeah, come fall's a totally different start. Because you'll be, you'll be closed, so that's one good thing for you.
I'll have time then too.
Yeah.
And all of you, your work is appreciated.
Yeah.
It's getting into policy stuff. The devil sometimes is in the details.
But I appreciate the details that you bring and the details that you study and the light that you bring.
But I definitely.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, John.
Motion to adjourn, Jan? Motion to adjourn. Well, I've been in since 5:30 this morning, but yes, our first meeting, we always have public health.